And we're good.
Good morning. Call to order the March 18, 2021 business meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, please call the roll.
Thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, County Council Stephen Madcor. Commissioner Schull is not present today because he is conducting county business at another meeting this morning. But with that, all the other commissioners are present here in the room. And I'll take roll call now. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you Gary. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes Chair Smith. First, we have wildfire updates, which will be provided by Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management. Go ahead, please Nancy.
Yeah, thank you Gary and good morning Commissioners. Before I go into the wildland recovery, I just want to talk about the ice storms just briefly. Let everyone know that Jay Wilson on my team is working with Oregon Emergency Management and FEMA to do all of our appointments next week for the jurisdictions here in Clackamas County to see if we're going to get the federal declaration. So that's moving along pretty quickly. So for the wildland fire update, I just have a few things here. Our Roads Department has identified nine new logging entrances on fire impacted roads. The roads are not falling apart exactly, but they are declining at a really extreme rate. And so I think that's something we're going to try to get FEMA to see if we can get the 75% to replace those roads.
Nice.
We've talked about logging before because it's really, there's been a lot of logging because of the burn and they're taking it out.
So Nancy, on this particular issue, is it the wildfire that we're getting, seeking reimbursement?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's because of the wildland fire that the logging is happening.
Yes.
So that's one of the things we'll be sure we talk to FEMA about next week. And we're pretty sure that it's going to be allowed. But I do want to thank the Roads Department for really watching that because unless we're watching it and we can show the deterioration, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay.
Also for housing, Social Services is now providing rental assistance through May for one household that is a fire, from the fires and is a victim of that. Our building and residential, building co-permits has went up now to 11. Electrical has went up to 39. Manufactured home replacement is now at 5. And plumbing is at 13. So again, that shows that we have a lot of rebuilding that is going on. The private property debris removal program, which is what we call PPDR, so ODOT, Abesta sampling crews have completed their sampling on 11 of our properties here in Clackamas County. There are currently 11 additional properties scheduled to have that sampling done. And the debris removal contractor is mobilizing a crew to perform chimney tipping on two of the properties here in Clackamas County beginning today. So that is also starting to move more quickly. I also just want to remind everyone from the fires that Highway 224 remains closed from mile post 31.3 to mile post 50. So hopefully after they get a lot of the trees out of the way that that will open as well.
Nancy, is that not open because of trees?
There are dangerous trees, the threat of landslide, those types of things from the fire.
How is the pavement? Does any of the pavement need to be replaced because of the fires?
I will have to find that out for sure.
I was just curious.
I have not read that anywhere, but I will double check.
So basically it's landslide and tree removal is the danger that's up there.
Okay, I will find that out for sure.
Every once in a while, I'll get a constituent who wants to know, why can't they go up there because it's a major recreation area? And I remind them, well, that's ODOT and this is going on now. I have a little more information. Thank you on that.
Right. And that's all I have Gary.
All right. Any questions from Commissioners? No, all right. Next is COVID-19 updates. Nancy will also provide that. Go ahead.
Thank you. And Christina, if you'll please bring up the slides. So we do have a lot going on with COVID-19, especially around vaccinations. So first, just to look at the US numbers, we're just over 29,534,099 deaths. Here in Oregon, we have 160,050 cases with 2,346 lives lost. Next slide please. Our case data here in the region, we have Clackamas County, we are now at 13,759 with 196 deaths, which I believe is the same as last week. Multnomah County has 32,470 total cases with 556 deaths. Washington County has 21,759 with 220 deaths. We are still, of course, at moderate risk. And for the week ending, 313, two weeks ending 313, our case per 100,000 population is at 86.2, which is just slightly up from the previous two weeks. And our test positivity is 4.0, which is also just slightly up from the last two weeks. Our case count on the next slide is, you notice we're just kind of going up and down there. We're just got a little dips and coming back up down there. So we have went from two weeks ago to 224, down to 137, and now we're back at 230. So we're just kind of seeing it staying low, but it's kind of just going up and down there. The hospital capacity, this slide shows, of course, the capacity. And our hospitals are in really good shape with ICU beds that are available. This is the most ICU beds that we've seen available for this long of a period of time for like almost a year or so. I kind of was looking at that back data. And of course, as the, our cases go down, and you know, there's other reasons, I think, because ICU beds are really very volatile, but we are really in good shape with our ICU beds because it could be anything from accidents, trauma, et cetera. It's not just about COVID. On the next slide please, the COVID positive patients in Northwest Oregon hospitals. As of 316, you'll see down there, if you look at our case count where we have a little up and down, that's what we're seeing too here with our hospitals. So it really does follow the case count and where we are there. Next slide please. So here in Clackamas County, we have a little over 37,000 that are in progress right now, getting their vaccination in Clackamas County. Fully vaccinated is 45,634. We will see those numbers obviously going up a lot more as we start getting in more and more vaccine here in Clackamas County. We have more vaccine that is now coming into our pharmacies, as well as it's going to be coming in here to Clackamas County. Our clinics, they are also going to start getting their own vaccine and some funding for the FQHCs, which is of course our clinics here in Clackamas County. And we are scheduling those clinics right now. And hopefully we'll have a couple of those in April. The vaccine scheduling on the next, excuse me, the next slide. Our mass vaccination clinics are still in Portland. We do encourage those who are eligible, and if you can make it to Portland, to please go to that clinic. Go to getvaccinated.organ.gov in order to sign up for that. We do have some local opportunities and we do have a phone number there for those who, that don't have internet access or with other access concerns, which is 503-655-8224. That is Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We are one of the very few counties that actually offers this service to those individuals who do not have access.
Okay, Nancy, would you repeat that again in case we didn't hear that correctly?
Yes, the phone number.
We are one of the few counties that does what?
That doesn't, that has this service for our population.
That does, repeat the service.
That we have the number for them to call if they can't get on the computer, if they don't have internet access, et cetera.
Okay. I think that's just really responsive. Thank you.
Yes, it is responsive. And we felt it was really important to do. But we do really encourage people, it's like, you know, if you don't have access, you can call. If you do have access, please keep that line open for those who really need it.
Thank you very much.
So we are going to have more local vaccination clinic opportunities that are coming available soon, which you'll be able to find at clackamas.us/coronavirus/vaccine. I do encourage people to go look at that because everything is changing very rapidly. And as we get in more vaccine and we're able to staff clinics, you're going to see a lot more clinics within the county. So the next slide, so we have some upcoming local vaccine opportunities. You'll see the dates there on March 26th and 27th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, the Clackamas Town Center. And we are saying what's going to be available there because we know that we have several, actually, there's several people that is actually waiting for J&amp;J. So we want to make sure that people know what kind of vaccine is going to be given there. On the 27th, the Sandy High School, and that'll be Pfizer. On March 31st, Clackamas County Fairgrounds at the main pavilion, and again, that's Pfizer. And March 31st is Mulala High School, which is Moderna. Just a few things, we want to make sure people understand, you must wear a mask if you're going to be in the clinic. These events are for Clackamas County residents only. We are not allowing or accepting any appointments from outside Clackamas County. The vaccines will be given regardless of health insurance or immigration status. And we also have interpreters that will be available at all of these sites as well. And it is scheduled by appointment only, which on the, we had just talked about where you can go on our county page to find that. And if you need assistance and you don't have access, the phone number there. And if you show up and you do not have an appointment, there will not be vaccine there for you. So we just want to make sure we emphasize that as well. And I think that's all I have unless there's some questions.
So Nancy, if they want to schedule for a vaccination, for instance, at Mulala High School.
Yes ma'am.
Do they use the email on the previous slide or call the phone number?
So if they want to, yes, if they don't have access, they can call the phone number, which again is the 503-655-8224. Otherwise, you can go to clackamas.us/coronavirus/vaccine. And there is a place there where you can go and make an appointment for the local clinics.
Okay, good.
Unfortunately, there's more than one place to make appointments. If you want to go to the town center, then you have to go to the getvaccinated.organ.gov.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Do we have Phillip today?
Not today, no.
Okay. Okay, any questions? Oh, here we go. Martha.
Yeah Nancy, I had a question about the Pfizer vaccine. I know that it really is extremely subzero temperatures. Has that been modified?
Yes, Pfizer did modify that like three to four weeks ago.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's been modified. Yeah. It is being refrigerated, obviously appropriately, but they have modified the temperature somewhat.
Christina.
Commissioner Fisher has her hand up?
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, so I'm just curious about the data. You said that 37,000 in Clackamas County have, are in progress and 45,000 have been fully vaccinated.
Yes ma'am.
Are those, is that the totality of all the Clackamas County residents? Or are those people that may have just been vaccinated here? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yes, it does make sense. And I can tell you that from my understanding of the data, so it could be that, yeah, maybe I go to Salem, right, to get it. I may not be in that count.
Okay, so the people that got vaccinated at the convention center are not in that count?
They probably are. I think they probably are. But it's like, and there's people going like to the eastern portion of the state. Those individuals may not be in that number.
Okay, so it's fluid data that gives us a sort of a ballpark.
We are doing the best we can. This is the information that we have, that we know from our own vaccinations, our own vaccination clinics, and from what we can get from the state, that the state is controlling. But if I go to a local clinic in Deschutes County, I may not be showing up here.
Okay, I'm hearing a lot of that, people going to Salem or going here or going there. So these are just conservative numbers. Chances are the numbers are higher.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, if people are waiting to get the J&amp;J, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination, will that information be made available by us? Or?
It will, we will make it known like we are for all of our clinics. It's like, so whatever vaccine is going to be at that clinic, we will make sure that it's like this, you know, we have maybe Pfizer, we could have Pfizer and J&amp;J at the same clinic, for example. But we're advertising what we have.
Do we know when the J&amp;J vax is coming?
I know the state already has some. We have not received any locally, I don't believe, but I'm not sure when we're going to start receiving it locally.
It's just kind of a crap shoot, right?
A lot of this is a kind of a crap shoot.
Thank you Nancy, you're very informative. Gary?
All right, thank you Nancy very much. Commissioners, we're moving to the first public hearing today. It is a public hearing on the proposed 2021, 2022 Housing Authority of Clackamas County Annual Plan, which includes $16 million for Section 8 voucher funds, $1.8 million in public housing funds, and $1.3 million in capital grants program funds. None of these are general funds. We have Jill Smith, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, to present.
I will now announce the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority for the next two items. Jill Smith.
I'm sorry Chair Smith, I jumped ahead in the script. It's my fault. I apologize.
That's okay.
We also have Housing Authority Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Is she not here, Anne?
She's not online yet.
Okay. Is Jill there?
Jill is, yes.
Okay, great.
Jill, just a minute, we need to turn up, Jill, we need to turn up your volume. Could you please start over?
I just turned her up, so. Go ahead Jill.
Okay, is that better?
Yes Jill, thank you.
Okay, good morning Chair Smith and Commissioners. I am here this morning due to a HUD requirement that Housing Authorities annually and/or every five years prepare a plan. And this plan is required to be a ready source for interested parties to locate basic Housing Authority policies, rules, and requirements related to our operations, our programs, and services. This is used to inform HUD, families served by the agency, and members of the public of our mission of housing options available to low-income residents of Clackamas County. And the Housing Authority's mission is to provide low-income people and ensure low-income people in Clackamas County have housing options. So quickly, this plan has been prepared and approved by the Resident Advisory Board. That is a group of residents in public housing, as well as participants in the Housing Choice Voucher Program. These folks came together via Zoom and were provided and trained on technology. And it was a really great opportunity for them to come together that way. They met for about three hours on January 12th, and this annual plan has been posted and out in the community for public comment between January 12th and February 25th. In addition to that, the Resident Advisory Board members, there were 11 in attendance that day, all received a written printed summary of policy changes that impact them. And they were asked to distribute those to other residents, their neighbors, relationships, and friends. Additionally, in an attempt to really be transparent and share this information, we emailed an overview of planned policy changes to all voucher holders and public housing tenants. Comments we have received so far because of these actions are in attachment K in the plan. I want to let the board know that you do not need to take any action today. Today's purpose is to be an adherence with what HUD requires for us to provide a brief presentation on the plan, receive additional public comments, and comment from the board. Staff will then edit the plan appropriately, adding that comment, and prepare it to go back to the board for approval at a Housing Authority business meeting scheduled for April 1st. The approved plan is due to HUD no later than April 17th. Ensuring that you understand, we have made, we have placed this plan at all of our office locations, as well as at the Clackamas County Public Library, and it is posted on our website as well. So today I'll provide just a brief overview of some of the substantial things in this plan, and then turn it back over to you for questions and so that we can hold this public hearing as required. First, I want to remind the board that Housing Authority of Clackamas County has received a high performer designation from HUD. This is required to be stated in the plan. We are not required to, even though you see how thick and administratively burdensome this plan is, several of the requirements were removed from our plate because we're a high performer. And what a high performer means is that we maintain the physical conditions of the public housing communities, which are inspected every year by HUD contractors at a level that they require, based on decent, safe, and sanitary housing. We administer the voucher program in accordance with rules and regulations. Our annual audit is clean with no findings. They look at our financial and administrative management of programs and ensure that we are correctly obligating and expending all of our federal funding. Federal funds make up well over 90% of the funding the Housing Authority administers. And the HUD-funded programs that I want to remind you of are, we have 2007 Section 8 Housing Choice vouchers. They consist of a traditional voucher, a VASH voucher, and a mainstream voucher, which is for homeless, disabled, non-elderly people. And the VASH vouchers are for veterans who are homeless and disabled as well. While we're expending 100% of the funding that we receive from HUD from that, it's 14 and a half million in housing assistance payments. That money is, we're a pass-through agency. All that we do is send that out to local landlords. So we're really contributing to the Clackamas County economy. 14 and a half million. Unfortunately, we don't have enough to serve all of the vouchers that we're authorized to serve. The rents are rising so rapidly in our area that the increased costs, HUD hasn't kept up with those. So while we could serve 2007, we're only able to serve 1,600 families because of limited money available to us. Right now, so that is a market-driven program. People take a voucher into the community and find a place to live. It's a wonderful program. People can live where they choose, near work, near childcare, near family. And right now, not everyone is successful. A lot of higher-barrier people aren't able to navigate and access the unit on their own. And we have about 87% of the folks who are given a voucher that are successful. The remaining folks do give that back to us and we issue it to someone else. The new supportive housing services funding that the Housing Authority will also be acting as a pass-through entity for, will enable us to contract for services to help those higher-barrier folks be placed successfully. So that's a big perk of that program coming on. We currently operate 445 public housing units. And we have funding associated with those rents and the capital fund that comes from HUD to maintain those units. As you know, those units, they were built in the 50s or earlier than that, and they were never really designed to be long-term housing. They were supposed to be temporary housing, temporary workforce housing. So what HUD supplies for those keeping and good repair really isn't adequate. And because it's public housing, you are not allowed to take out any debt to maintain or redevelop or rehabilitate those units. Nationally, HUD has a backlog of about $70 billion in capital needs for public housing across this country. And I'll talk about what we intend to do because of that in just a minute. Quickly, I want to call out a few successes for this year. We received 25 new veteran supportive housing vouchers. So we have a total of 146 of those. 91 of those are being utilized by previously homeless, chronically homeless veterans with disabilities and high needs. And they do come with case management that the vets receive from the VA Medical Center. So those are truly vouchers that are meant to serve high-needs people. They have more than just a housing piece. So while 91 of those are leased, we still have several that aren't. And COVID has created a lot of challenges with us getting access to the VA caseworkers that are essential in ensuring these folks get housed and provided services. So that's something we're still working on, is utilizing the rest of those. All of our folks at the Veterans Village that have been successfully housed have had a VASH voucher. So it's been a really great way to partner those county programs together. Mainstream vouchers, we got 98 through a competitive grant process and now have a total of 214. And then Foster Youth to Independence, that's a new voucher program that's pretty exciting. It allows, it gives a foster youth that's homeless, aging out of the foster care program, rent assistance, and wraparound services for three years, giving them time to get to school, get stable, and transition off of housing. So we've applied for 50 more of those. I anticipate we'll hear and receive those soon. Development successes, Rosewood Station is finalizing its last 80 units right now. That's a project that the board approved a few years ago. It's finally operational. All of the units are anticipated to be occupied this summer. We're hoping that by summer or fall, they can have some kind of a celebratory event. I've tried to send you all updates on this and how it's going. As a reminder, 100% of these units are affordable to people earning 60% or less of area median income. We placed 20 vouchers on 20 of the units so that they could be accessible to people who are extremely low income. And a handful of those are VASH vouchers for homeless veterans. As you know, we funded conceptual awards to three projects through the Metro Bond Funding totaling 413 additional affordable homes that will come online in the next few years. So it's exciting to see what's happening in Clackamas County. Hillside Manor, the only high-rise in our county, is, was successfully transitioned out of public housing. It is no longer public housing. It is, it was refinanced through a tax credit partnership. The Housing Authority just owns a slice of that, but we are the managing oversight entity. It's being managed by Quantum Property Management right now. And the rehab of it is going extremely well. It's going to be beautiful and I can't wait. It's going to be beautiful, and I can't wait until it's safe enough to bring you all down for a tour. We'll bring you more pictures, and right now, there's some community decisions going on around what the outside will look like. We anticipate early completion. It should be done this summer.
Wow.
And then, the other thing that's really active right now is Hillside Park. The plan for that, as you know, that planning process was extensive. It happened for well over a year, lots of community input. That plan, tentative preliminary approval is going before the City of Milwaukee next week on March 23rd. We hope to start moving those residents out of the park, those 100 residents out, and demolishing those units so all get a voucher and have the opportunity to move somewhere of their choosing, and also be given the opportunity to move back as a priority to the newly developed housing that will be on the site. And if you recall, we'll be redeveloping up to 400 additional units on that site, and the community plan is just beautiful. So a lot happening, and a lot more that needs to happen related to public housing. And I wanted to touch on that with you just briefly, and we'll be bringing you more information on this soon. New activities that are outlined in this plan include signaling to HUD and the community, the Housing Authority's intention to reposition all 445 units of our public housing portfolio. And what that means is the Housing Authority has a strong desire to move out of public housing and into more public-private partnerships, similar to the ones that we've been discussing. So due to limited capacity, we can do one of these at a time. The one at the park is going to be first. You'll see in this plan that we signaled to HUD that we intend to move forward with all of our public housing, and we will continue to signal that to HUD every year as a requirement. If we did not do that, and we had an opportunity to move forward, and one of those opportunities, HUD would restrict us in doing so. So we will continue to do that until we're able to get through all of this work. Moving out of public housing is a very cumbersome, administratively difficult process with HUD, and we have to do it methodically and carefully to ensure we receive a voucher for every one of those units that those public housing tenants lives in. If we don't do it correctly, those folks will not have subsidy when their unit, you know, eventually is demolished and something is replaced. So it's critical to protect them, that we do this carefully and thoughtfully. And again, I'm going to bring you more information on this soon. Just a few more things. The supportive housing services major funding that you're all familiar with, and we'll be bringing a plan to you in April, hopefully for your approval. The Housing Authority will be responsible for the administration of the long-term rent assistance program that will be funded by that measure, as will the Washington County and Multnomah County Housing Authorities. A regional rent assistance program has been designed and developed that is much more flexible and intended to serve high-needs, previously homeless, disabled individuals and families. We're super excited to be able to offer this. We know the federal program. We know the challenges associated with it. So with a lot of help and community input, we've designed a long-term rent assistance that's suited to this population, that aligns with needed services to keep them housed. So that will be part of the plan you hear about, and HAC will be taking on the responsibility of administering that. All other major funding is intended to be pushed into the community and provided to partners.
Thank you, Jill. Time to wrap up.
Okay. There's just a few other things that I want to make sure that you know about, because they're the things that impact the residents. But they're all in the plan. We've got reduced screening criteria, where we know the landlords can screen people that get a voucher, so the Housing Authority doesn't need to do that. Probably the biggest change that we've made with public housing is we've created a no-tolerance harassment policy to ensure that there's not tenant-on-tenant harassment happening, which we have had issues with in the recent past. Everything else is there for your review. Are there any questions?
Yes, Jill. I want to thank you. It was a very informative presentation today, and I know our commissioners are going to have some questions. I just want to say, the Hillside Manor was a project that I was involved in the last time I was a commissioner, and we were creeping toward a realizing, it was hopeful at that time, aspirational goal, what has now been realized now with the remodel of Hillside Manor and the rejuvenation of the park, and it will increase the housing units of people. And I'm very happy, happy that that has happened. But like you say, it takes a long time when you're working with HUD. And so all your presentation today was revolved around HUD. And just so the folks listening, there's a whole bunch of other housing opportunities besides the HUD housing. But I have a couple of questions regarding the market-driven vouchers that we supposedly had 2007, but because of the high cost of rents, that's been kind of watered down to 1,600. Is that what I heard?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is there a waiting list for that particular voucher program?
Yes, there is. We actually opened up the applications to build a waiting list and had over 10,000 applicants in four days. So a lottery happened, and we randomly selected 3,000 people to go on the waiting list, because you don't really want more than you can fill in three to five years.
Three to five years? That's was my question. Okay.
Yes.
And so it's a lottery? That's good, because I didn't know if, for instance, somebody applied last year, would they still stay on the list, but then it goes back into the system, and then they're just chosen at random? Is that right?
Yes, unfortunately, it is.
Yeah. I think it used to be different, but hey, I'm not setting the rules for that. It's just the way it is. I don't know how you do it when the need is so great. Thank you very much on that. Commissioner Savas, you're in the queue.
Yeah, Jill, don't want to belabor the conversation a whole lot, but what you mentioned that's happening at Hillside Manor with, and Hillside Park with regards to densifying that and replacing the older housing is very similar to what we had discussed, I think, prior to you coming on to Clackamas County, what we had done with Oregon City Manor, I believe, in relationship to Rosewood Terrace, right? And so we, I think we had a transition plan there as well to maximize the, you know, the properties up on Holcomb to densify that similarly. So you didn't mention that in your plan. I'm looking forward to better understanding what happened there, because I do know that the tax break we gave, the property tax bake, in particular for Rosewood Terrace, was premised on that transition plan. So I would like to learn more about that, not necessarily today. But the question I have for today is this transition out, as you explained it, out of public housing into a voucher program in public-private partnerships, you know, isn't the life cycle roughly, well, Rosewood Terrace, for example, I think that's a 60-year life cycle. So my question is twofold. Number one, what happens then after year 60? And is that going to be a liability for the county, or is that going to be, or for the Housing Authority? Or, you know, what happens, what's the future of public housing at that point? And secondly, along the way in these public-private partnerships, does that have the best protection for the actual cost of the rent that's applied to the voucher? Do we have more control or less control? And what better assurances, or what assurances do we have that someone would guarantee that that'll be as low as possible?
Now, those are excellent questions, Commissioner Savas. And it's one of the most controversial discussions in the country related to public housing, because you're right, when public housing goes away and you're in these partnerships, there is no absolute guarantee that those will forever serve vulnerable people. So it's a deal-by-deal basis. I think it's really critical that the Housing Authority, as we fund these with Metro Bonds, or we approve tax abatements, or whatever other mechanisms we choose to move forward with, Housing Authority should be giving first right of refusal at that 60-year point, when those restrictions are lifted, to ensure that it stays affordable forever. That is in place at Rosewood, and I think that we should prioritize that moving forward with all this new development going on.
I think it's incumbent on us to think forward and think about what's going to happen at that point. I won't be around 60 years from now. Maybe you will.
I don't think so.
But, you know, I do, always a little bit of humor, which is great. But I do, I do, I think we have, it's incumbent upon us to be thinking out ahead.
I agree.
Jill, thanks. And Paul, you make really good questions. Behooves to have a policy session on this moving forward, and I think we're going to have one coming up to answer a lot of these pending questions, because we do see some change and movement in our ability to offer housing. Any more commissioners' comments?
I just have one quick question.
Yes, Commissioner Schrader.
So Jill, when you talked about the housing services money, that's the here-together wraparound services, who might those nonprofits be that you're going to contract with? I mean, I'm kind of curious as how that's going to work. How much are you going to handle internally with staffing already extant here in the county, and how much is going to go? Have we figured out that plan yet?
Well, our priority is to try to draw nonprofits into Clackamas County that work throughout the whole community and, you know, our neighborhood base that people know and feel comfortable working with. We don't have enough of those right now, so it's likely we'll have to invest in building that the first year or two. But the intention is to limit the amount of county employee administration and staffing as much as possible to draw these folks in. I envision year one, we may have to invest in helping to develop some culturally specific providers to come into Clackamas County. And that is a total eligible use of that funding, and it's a huge need in our community.
Sounds like another policy session, or an addition too, right, Gary?
Yes, yes.
Policy question we need to.
Yeah, it's definitely a policy question, and I'm glad, Commissioners, you're raising this. Any more comments from Commissioners?
Yeah, I just would like to say thank you to Jill for all of the information and all of the work. And I don't know if everybody else, as you're going through the whole list, go, oh, wow, we're doing so much. It's like you almost get tired hearing of all of the activities. And Clackamas County's been a real leader in the region, and I just really want to thank Jill for her and her team's leadership on these issues.
Thank you very much. Not seeing anybody else in the queue. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first on this housing issue. I don't see any cards regarding to this particular hearing. I have cards for later in the business meeting. Christina, will you please moderate the Zoom? Do we have anybody on Zoom testifying?
I do not have any registered speakers for this public hearing.
Okay, that's wonderful. I will close the public hearing and ask if there is any further discussion. I will now announce that this item will come back for board action on April 1st, 2021, at the regularly scheduled business meeting for final approval. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair Smith. So Commissioners, you are still sitting as the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Next is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes. Number one is in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the third quarter of fiscal year 2021, $4,675.94 in total collection losses. Number two is the matter of approving the delegation of budget authority for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. No funds are involved. Number three, requesting approval to apply for a grant for 50 new limited-term vouchers for Foster Youth to Independence Rental Assistance Program. Maximum grant value is $540,000, and no general funds are involved. Number four is approval to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and the State of Oregon, acting through Oregon Housing and Community Services for the Landlord Compensation Fund Program. The Oregon Housing and Community Services is providing $15,112,500 in program funds, and there are no general funds involved. And that is your consent agenda.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off the consent agenda for the Housing May I have a motion?
Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Commissioner Savas has moved that we approve the consent agenda. The motion is seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussions? Christina, please call the poll.
Okay. And typically, I would call Commissioner Leenstra, but I do not see her on our list, so I just wanted to point that out. We'll start with Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Smith.
Aye. The motion has been approved. I will now announce the board will adjourn as a Housing Board Authority and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Gary, what's next?
And next, Chair Smith, is the consent agenda for normal county business. Christina, could you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Of course. Starting with Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a sub-award agreement with the National Association of County and City Health Office to receive the grant award for the Climate and Health Adaptation and Local Health Department Project. Contract is increased by $17,000. We're funding from a grant award from the National Association of County and City Health Office. No general funds are involved. Number two is approval of an agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail, and Public Transit Division for an FTA 5311 Rural Transportation Funds for COVID-related Operations for the Mount Hood Express. The maximum funded would be $205,000, and no matches required. For the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a supplemental project agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Southeast Johnson Creek Boulevard, 79th Place through 82nd Avenue Project. The project costs are $2,485,420 through the funding sources of arts funds, community road fund, condition of approval permit, Clackamas County Development Agency, and county road funds. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under disaster management, approval of amendment number one to the personal services agreement with Advantage Nursing Staff of Oregon to provide on-call temporary medical staffing services to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. This will increase the contract by $1 million, bringing the maximum value to $2 million. Funding through Public Health Cares Program, and no general funds are involved. Number two, approval of amendment number two to the personal services agreement with Robert Half Incorporated Temporary Administrative Staff. This will increase the contract by $150,000, bringing the maximum value to $300,000, excuse me. Funding through Oregon Health Authority Cares Program, no general funds are involved. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Christina. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Commissioner Savas has moved we approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded it. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Smith.
Aye. The motion has passed. Thank you. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of consideration, of board consideration, and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us can be sent, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take the first in-person people that have arrived in our building first, and my first card is Rick Dodge. Would you please come up to the microphone, state your name and your place of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. I'm Rick Dodge. I live in Milwaukee.
I live in Milwaukee, and I'm here on a matter of, that you're probably all very sick and tired of hearing about, but it's, as a constituent and taxpayer, this is serious stuff. And I'm talking about Mark Scholl's resignation that you Commissioners are requiring. I wanted to find out what the procedure was as far as getting to that point of his, whether he's going to get, resign or not. And what I found was pretty disturbing to me, and I think, and in talking to other constituents, it was as well. I saw the, I went back to the January 14th meeting to watch the testimony that each of you gave on Mark's issue. And what I learned was something that kept me up all night. And, and what I'm talking about here is the tearful compassionate testimony that each of you gave in support of, of Mark Scholl's resignation that you want right now. And I saw that, and I waited until everybody was done, and I didn't hear one thing. I continued my research. I saw where Mark had gone to the religious leaders, apologized, and I'm assuming the religious leaders were in Clackamas County, but it really doesn't matter, even though it's a county issue. And somebody had sent out letters throughout Multnomah County and to Salem, and I think it was Commissioner Fisher, correct me if I'm wrong. This is a county issue. Nobody outside the county should be, in my opinion, involved with it. But Mark Scholl goes to the religious leaders, and when it was done, and I watched him apologize to them and asked them for their forgiveness. I think it was in a mosque. I could be wrong. Nevertheless, those religious leaders, when it was done, said that they will stand by him, and they will forgive him. And that's not what I saw when each of you gave your testimonies at all. I mean, the, I hate to use the word self-righteousness in your testimonies, a little hypocritical when at the very end of it, you're saying, no, we want your resignation right now, instead of what the others are willing to do and you're not willing to do. I just, I was, that's why I'm here. And I'm asking each of you, if you, if you have a...
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. I really appreciate you coming and expressing your frustration.
Forgive the guy and give him a chance.
Thank you.
We voted for him.
I appreciate you coming, and you can always welcome to come back again. Gary, do you care to comment on that?
Commissioners, at that meeting, you did approve a censure for Commissioner Scholl. You encouraged him to resign. It's his choice to resign or not. You cannot force him to do that. Only the voters can do that if they choose through a recall or the next election. So you made your statements, and then you're moving on with county business, so.
I did not demand, I asked. At the time, I considered it the right thing to do as chair of this commission. Moving forward, Commissioner Scholl at this very moment is conducting county business as a county commissioner.
Can you talk into the mic more, please?
Yes, I can. Commissioner Scholl right now is conducting county business, is why he is not at this meeting. He has continued to conduct county business. He has been signed by me and this commission liaison duties, of which I have been taking hits and hits and hits on this. And no elected official can ever compel another elected official into action. Be that clear. Only the voters can do that. And you may have an opportunity when that time comes, and that time is prescribed in Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. So I think you can appreciate the position I have been in as your chair, and take that to heart. Please state your name, your residence, and Bill, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Bill Ware from Damascus. There has been complaints made from those that want Commissioner Scholl unseated, in that there hasn't been consequences for him after the commission censored him unanimously on July 14th. But I would contend that Commissioner Scholl is in fact being punished on an ongoing basis. His reputation has been maligned by taxpayer-paid department heads going to the media demanding his resignation. There's a constant regurgitation by Commissioner Fisher, encouraged by her enablers on and off this commission, for him to resign effectively, immediately as per Section 2 of the censor resolution. In the Budget Committee, Commissioner Fisher and her supporters demanded that Mr. Scholl's salary as commissioner be eliminated. The Veterans Committee had a meeting where Mr. Scholl was subject to a Star Chamber inquisition. That gave the opportunity for Ms. Fisher to follow up with again attacking Mr. Scholl in the media. On January 25th, the county administrator sent a memo addressed to colleagues, expressing his distress concerning a previous memo where he forwarded a statement from Commissioner Scholl to all employees. The administrator states, quote, "His statement," meaning Mr. Scholl's, "caused more trauma and pain for many of you." In a later section, he writes, "The voters of Clackamas County will ultimately decide Commissioner Scholl's future." Are we talking recall? One example of the order for justice spreading among taxpayer-paid public employees is a letter sent by the human services manager to Mr. Scholl. The cover page had the words, stamping out, "One white supremacist at a time, your life depends on it," below the department's logo. On February 3rd, there was a memo announcing the Equity and Inclusion Office is holding space for employees who have felt harmed by Commissioner Scholl's statements. People are to share the harm they are experiencing by Commissioner Scholl's statements. There are two meetings scheduled, and will hold two more without the county administrator. In addition to these four, it says, "We may schedule meetings if there is continued interest." The meetings will not be recorded. It is obvious he has to go through layers of selective feelings, pious virtue signaling, and actions behind his back. This certainly isn't a welcoming and inclusive place for Mr. Scholl. All this for the goal of overturning an election. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Yvonne Lazarus. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne Lazarus, and I live in Oak Grove. Is that enough?
Yes, it is.
First thing I want to talk about is Metro. They're wanting to put a dump off Jennifer Street. What I read in this paper is that it would cost between $40 million and $120 million. I cannot even believe this. We have no money. We have so many things for you guys to do. No. Metro doesn't care about land use orders. I know. If it's in their way, they'll figure a way to get it thrown out. And Tootie, I know that when Mr. Johnson, I think that, yeah, Dan Johnson, when he talked to you, he was saying that Clackamas County had nothing to do with this. That's what it says here. And I want to thank you for saying, yes, it does, because the people in Clackamas County will be affected by all of this. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, the next thing that I want to talk about is, I watched the meeting last week, and I was appalled by it. I cannot believe that one person on this board can cause this distress. It has to be stopped. And Sonia, we're going to stop it. It's got to. This is nonpartisan, and it's been everything but, in my opinion, this has been a political And it's pretty obvious to everybody. I just, you know, it keeps me up at night that this could happen. All Mark did is show a light on the incompetency of some things that were going on. That's all he did. That's it. When the people lost to him, they couldn't believe it. It shouldn't have mattered. He was voted in, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Up next, Joel Haverkamp. Please state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Joel Haverkamp, Oregon City. Can I testify today without getting confronted by her by telling, telling that I am, she wants to meet with me. I know she called me and wanted to talk to me, but I don't think that when someone testifies...
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Someone testifies, you should not be confronted by one of the Commissioners and trying to change your mind. I think that this is a sham, what you're doing to him. I would doubt that any of these people on this recall petition right here ever served in the military. My husband did. My son is a disabled vet. My grandson was in Afghanistan crawling on his stomach in the desert for two years. And so I don't even think that, I'd like to really see how many people even served in the service. If, I've talked to so many people in the service and other people all week long. I have no time limits now that my husband passed. They are so upset that they want to recall her. They are so upset that every meeting she has to say how bad Mark Scholl is. He couldn't have been too bad because he was a lieutenant colonel in the military. He got the Bronze Star. You don't get a Bronze Star unless you do something exceptional. So it's very upsetting. He was elected by Clackamas County. Why are all these people from other counties saying they want him recalled? They were sent papers. They didn't willingly do this. They were sent papers to fill out and send back. Joanne Hardesty? Come on! She's the city council of Portland. She can't even run Portland, and she's telling us how to run Clackamas County? This is a joke, these people on here, the mayors on here of Portland? I'm just astonished. And if there's any nonprofits on here, they will not be nonprofits when I turn them in for what they're doing. You cannot do this. I always, I've done so many nonprofits, I've done so many fundraisers, that you cannot overstep. You cannot get political when you're into nonprofits. I'm surprised the attorney hasn't advised you, you Commissioners. What is going on here? This is libelous, when you go and send forms to people to send back that you're trying to get rid of a Commissioner? I think it's appalling myself, and I think that you should get back to business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel. I don't see any more cards for public testimony.
I think you have.
John had us...
John? Yeah, there should have been one more card.
There's one in there for John.
I'm sorry, John.
No apology necessary.
Hang on a minute. Hang on a minute. John Naughts, would you please come up? Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. John Naughts, Sandy, Oregon, up in the hills and the woods between Estacada and Sandy. Yes, and we did evacuate, and we didn't have power, and we set up our militia and stopped traffic and thieves and everything else. Getting to the point, thank you very much. I think we were all here last Thursday evening when I, what I'd like to refer to as a breach of protocol, and I was told basically that I need to set up a meeting, and if I saw what Commissioner Fisher has, then I wouldn't have, and the voters wouldn't have voted for Mr. Mark Scholl. Problem with that is, how do you know who I voted for? First question. The only thing you know is that I'm not a registered Democrat. Secondly, Monday afternoon, I got home, I received a message from Kimberly to call the office, set up a meeting with Commissioner Fisher, to come down to the office and discuss paperwork she has in regard to what is going on with some of the Commissioners. Now, I want to go back to January 20th at my home, when I received a call from Commissioner Fisher, explaining to me, quote, "Mark Scholl is unfit to serve." Oh, I don't think you're qualified to give a psychological evaluation. I'd like to have a definition of that. At that time, she had the opportunity to mail to me, email to me, all the paperwork that she had, and I said, if you have something you'd like me to read, please send it. Sunday evening, the 24th afternoon, I called and left a message. I hadn't received anything yet, wanted to confirm the email, and I was anxious to receive any information she had. So I want to know what happened in the last two months, that we couldn't have solved that in the last two months, and now I have to have a personal meeting, since I've received nothing from her, and she was so insistent in January. Just a question, can somebody give me in writing as to why I didn't receive a call, an apology, or why the information wasn't sent at that time, that now I have to set up a private meeting? I'm dumbfounded with that. We're at a point where I don't want to play this game and sit here and exchange witticisms, because what it comes down to is not Mark Scholl, it's the integrity of the whole county and most of its employees that are on a 10, 11-page list of names and businesses. I personally, it's not my first circus, I'm disappointed in attorneys, district attorneys, election officials, and particularly people in Portland who can't stop the problem in their own town, and the best Ted Wheeler can come up with is, they're tired of the destruction and the violence, and it must be anarchist. Took 12 months to figure that out. I've dealt with Portland since the '70s, when I threatened to sue them on behalf of a black football team they tried to throw out of a league. So I've been around a long time. So I know how to take legal action. I suggested it to Mark Scholl, because I will start a paper trail, because that's the only thing we're going to do here.
Thank you, Mr. Naughts. Anybody else in the room to testify that I may have missed?
Nobody in the room.
Christina, we have somebody in the queue.
Chair Smith. Commissioner Fisher. Mr. Naughts, I was interested in hearing your perspective, and it's my understanding that my staff did reach out to you with information, and I'm getting your perspective now, so if you're not interested in connecting with me, that's your choice, but my door is always open, and I just want you to know that.
May I?
No, let's not do that. I just wanted to respond to the direct question.
Both of you, I'm not going to have this engaged in this hearing room. You two go out in the hall. You know what? You two go out in the hall. Commissioner Fisher answered you. You bring up some very good points, Mr. Watts. I appreciate your points, but we are not going to engage in a argument from the dais to the people in the audience. That is not appropriate. You two go outside, and if Commissioner Fisher does not want to finish the meeting, we're almost done, that is up to her. Or, when the meeting is finished, Commissioner Fisher, you go outside, and Commissioner Fisher, I would recommend at this time that you engage the people outside. I was able to answer a question earlier about the entire process, but this is getting a little bit too personal. I do not want to hear it again. Thank you very much. Christina, is there anybody in the queue?
We have three registered people on Zoom.
Okay, let's get started.
All ready. First up is going to be Chris Waller. Chris, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have...
Chris, go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Last week, I was cut off while playing a clip of Pastor Russell Collier of Sandy demeaning and denouncing LGBTQ people. I can understand why you did it. That speech was horrific and hateful. But if these words appalled you, and they should, then you should be equally appalled that Mark Scholl knowingly gave a speech and shared a stage with Pastor Collier at the same event where those words were spoken. There is no chance that Mr. Scholl did not know with whom he was sharing the stage. He and Pastor Collier attended Trump-supporting flag waves founded by Dixie Bailey, a Proud Boys supporter who menaced her critics with a gun and threatened Black Lives Matter demonstrators who showed up at a rally. The Southern Poverty Law Center labels the Proud Boys an extremist white nationalist hate group. Both Pastor Collier and Mr. Scholl attended the August 24th flag wave, which was also attended by Alan James Swinney, a Proud Boy who was later arrested for threatening anti-fascist demonstrators in Portland with a gun. On September 7th, Mark Scholl spoke at a Trump rally in Oregon City. He was followed by Patriot Prayer founder Joey Gibson, who currently faces federal criminal charges of inciting a riot, and then by convicted felon Flip Todd, vice president of the local Proud Boys chapter. Later that day, Proud Boys and others from the rally drove to Salem and beat Black Lives Matter demonstrators with baseball bats. This is not just guilt by association. A public official or candidate for public office should be held to high ethical standards. By choosing to repeatedly associate with groups and individuals who spread hateful ideologies, Mr. Scholl gives the appearance of condoning and encouraging such behavior. Certainly, he has not spoken out against it. For people who are members of the groups targeted by these ideologies, such as many of the groups that you just discussed, that you may have to work with for public housing, his actions create distrust. For those public employees that Bill Ware just criticized for speaking out, their harm is real. This board has been consumed with discussions about partisanship. It is hard to imagine how anybody with such deep ties to hateful ideologies can leave that mindset behind when walking in the office door. As an aside, Commissioner Scholl asked for empirical evidence of his racist and hateful behavior. We have compiled this evidence at recallmarkscholl.com, annotated, referenced, and illustrated. Please take a look. Thank you.
Up next?
Up next is, let me stop that, Les Poole. Les, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Good morning. I intended to be there, but they're cleaning up storm debris in my yard. It's hard to believe that this far down the road, we're hearing chainsaws day after day. But the reason I share that is that the sound of those chainsaws reminds me of what kind of trauma we've been through and what we face as a community and how troubled I am by the amazing dedication to conducting a trial and elimination of an elected official. And regardless of what anyone thinks about anything Mark Scholl has ever written, said, or done, I want to repeat something that I said recently. Mr. Scholl, Commissioner Scholl faces a political attack that isn't working. That means that he'll be facing some type of a recall in July, a recall effort. I can only tell you that through all of the recent weeks spent on Mr. Scholl's writings from prior to being elected, but it is just stunning given the situation we're in. And what's really troubling is, of course, the apparent leadership of Commissioner Fisher. And over and over, Commissioner Fisher has offered to talk and meet and communicate and educate and clarify various citizens and residents that have come in and testified on this issue. But I don't hear her do that on any of the business of the county. Was there deep probing questions this morning or last week or the week before? No, the deepest act, the deepest and strongest and most devoted effort that I'm witnessing from Commissioner Fisher is a overzealous attempt and a very hypocritical attempt to replace Mark Scholl, a man who defeated her political ally and sidekick, Ken Humbersum. It's very clear that the message from the November election on the bond measures and the same result came in May. We had two elections last year. The message was very clear. And unfortunately, there are folks, especially Commissioner Fisher, who did not get it. So please, anyone that's watching, go back and hear what I and others said last week. And let's be clear about one thing. This is a nonpartisan commission and we need to keep it that way as much as possible.
Thank you, Les. I appreciate it. Up next, Christina.
All right, thanks, Les. Let's go ahead and move on. The last one is Christine Kennedy. Christine, just go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioner Fisher. I, excuse me, Commissioner Smith and all the other commissioners, that really and truly was a mistake. I'm sorry for that. I am very concerned again about the tenor of the in-person comments. I just would like to say that as soon as I'm completed with my immunizations, I plan to do in-person comments. We are still recovering with pandemic. And once again, I would just like to say, I listened to the entire meeting last week. I listened to the meeting on Tuesday morning. And clearly, people are hearing what's being said with very different ears and through very different lenses. And I was very appreciative of the information this morning about the housing in Clackamas County. It was a great presentation, lots to learn. So I just would encourage you all to stay with the subject at hand and allow administrative review of what's happening. You all need to grow up in terms of your leadership style and move forward. Commissioner Fisher, I do appreciate your probing questions. I do think you are asking good questions and I appreciate everybody's hard work. Best of luck with all the recovery.
Thank you, Christine. And that is the end of public comment?
Thank you. We see no fellow people in the queue or in the room. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting and we'll move on. Gary, what's the next item?
Next is county administrator update, and I'm happy to provide that for you commissioners. I like to always share some good positive news that is going on here at the county and I will do that today as well. First, North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, or NCPRD, did receive a grant of $750,000 from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for the Milwaukee Bay Park Project. You had given approval for us to apply for this a few weeks ago. NCPRD is working with the City of Milwaukee and other partners to fund this project, which will involve 3.5 acres at the waterfront park in the City of Milwaukee. The final planned improvements included children's play area, interactive water feature, social gathering areas, art, and a permanent alignment of the trolley trail through the park. So thank you to the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for that funding support. Next, Clackamas Water Environment Services, or Wes, just received gold certification status from the Clackamas County Leaders in Sustainability Program. This program is based here internally at the county in the Department of Transportation and Development and provides businesses with services and guidance to advance their environmental goals. Participating organizations take steps to minimize waste and conserve energy, water, and other tasks. While this program is primarily for external-facing businesses, Water Environment Services chose to apply themselves and they became certified a few years ago at the civil, civil, silver certification level. And now they've received the gold certification status. So thank you to our staff for their good work at Water Environment Services. That is my update, Commissioner.
Thank you, Gary. We are going to start with Commissioner Communications. And I want to say, any commissioner can engage any person who has come before to testify, whether in person or on Zoom. Likewise, people who have come here. If you have an issue with any commissioner, I suggest that you try to contact them. We have lots of phone numbers. You can walk right over to our offices and get an appointment. You need to schedule an appointment in person if you need to do that. I would appreciate that, too, if you need to talk any more business beyond what is done in this hearing venue. Thank you very much. Up first on Commissioner Communication is Martha Schrader.
Great. Well, thanks for coming, everybody, today. I know that we have Vietnam veterans and other veterans in the room and I appreciate, thank you for your service. A few things that I wanted to talk about today is that I had an oppo, pardon me?
They can't hear Martha.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay. One of the key things I did this week is I had an opportunity to attend a county commissioner focus group in order to help choose the new vice provost for extension and engagement. And that's kind of for the whole Oregon State University system of extension throughout the state. It's a pretty important position because extension not only serves our county, but it has a significant presence in all the rest of the 35 counties. We're one of 36 counties in the state of Oregon. And it was a privilege to be asked to have a conversation. They are going to be hiring someone new and we really have to stay involved in making sure that extension in particular stays strong in our county as well as throughout the state. So I'm really, was really happy to be able to do that. The next piece I wanted to do was to bring up what I've been bringing up every week. Christina? Okay, so this is Journey Down the Clackamas. And we are now on March 23rd, 21, at 6:00 PM. We're going to be doing Geology 1, An Introduction to Western Oregon Regional Geology. And it's going to be an overview of the Western Cascades. This is a year-long group that's putting together information about all things Clackamas, about the Clackamas River watershed. You can still register to attend any of these meetings. Go to clackamisriver.org. Get on, do it. They're great. These are actually really professional, people who are professionals in the field that are going to give us a real overview about our watershed, how important it is, and every piece that we need to know to keep a clean watershed here in this county. Another piece I'd like to mention very quickly about Water and Environment Services is that they have absolutely involved in this particular conference as well. But they also, I'll be going to their meeting tonight. I'm on their advisory committee. And Wes basically is putting on an online workshop for river health stewardship. And what does that mean? That means that folks are right now who are in the Happy Valley area and the Clackamas area. If you want to go ahead as a group and pull together a application for a grant for watershed help, Wes is asking you to go on March 31st to an online workshop that will teach you how to do that. And basically, it will work to help tips to people to help prepare an application in order to get dollars to do watershed health projects. So those are the things that I wanted to talk about today and thank you, Chair.
Oh, you bet. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to be brief because I'm obviously supposed to be at a meeting downstairs with, on a legal matter with staff and some other officials. So I'll just going to be, just talk. It's been a heavy-duty transportation week. Yesterday, all day, from morning to night and even this morning, carried into this morning, transportation activity regarding Congress considering a transportation infrastructure bill. Was going to be a large, large bill. We've learned that it's going to be perhaps reduced and so we are trying to adjust the package accordingly as a region. Chair Smith and I have been trying to lobby our senators and congressmen for some projects in Clackamas County. We are the smaller of the three counties and we are politically not as affluent, apparently, or have the weight that the Monmouth County does in the City of Portland. So we'll see how we fare. History is about us. If you look around at what we have as far as transportation infrastructure and transit, you'll see that we're woefully short. I brought up this morning the transit matters. We initially, we're going to have an electric, not electric, electric bus facilities added to a bus station in Portland, nearby Clackamas County. Learned recently that that actually has been not going to happen, that it's going to be a new facility up on Columbia Boulevard, the very north part of this region. That's a long way from Clackamas County. And when I was doing my research last night in the wee hours, realized that, for example, all the bus garages, most of them are in Portland. Then there's one in Washington County and there is none in Clackamas County. So I kind of mentioned that this morning. It seemed to resonate with some other folks in the region. I'm not sure where this package is going to go, but I'm hoping that we get a good share of that or a fair share of that. I think there's some cities in Clackamas County that might be the benefactors. And of course, we're lobbying very hard for I-205. That's probably the project. That's not our project. That is the state's project. It's not our dollars, per se, or, but it's something that we've been endorsing as a region. I'm fighting for that, to get that completed so we can avoid some of the diversion and other factors and make commerce flow down our interstates better than it is today. So with that, Chair, I'm going to conclude my comments there and I'm going to step out and join my, join my group downstairs.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you know, all of the commissioners have quite the workload beyond what you see at this meeting. And Commissioner Savas talked about some of his, Commissioner Fisher and Schrader also. This week, I toured Clackamas Community College and had a tour from its president, Tim Cook. It was a delightful experience for me. The college, too, has experienced a lot of limb tree and ice damage and they're cleaning up. Unfortunately, most of their classes are online. And walking through the college, it was a very eerie experience for me because I missed very much the hustle and bustle and the energy of students in their backpacks, running to one class to another, talking, grabbing a cup of coffee. And all of that was absent. As we move forward, I'm hoping very much that our governor opens up Oregon. Cases are declining. We have a vaccination and we just need to open up as we do at the county. And also, we need to think about opening up our county fair and we are working on that very much. I was able to tour the industrial technology area at the county. And the students who go through that training and several other trainings, it's a, and there's a degree program in environmental sciences. Those students have jobs before they even get close to finishing their degree program. And they really are filling a niche for talent and skilled workforce for our businesses. And that's something that Commissioner Schrader has been talking about as long as I've known her. It's a wonderful program. They are really filling a need for our skilled workforce. As we know, a lot of us are retiring from that. I viewed the science lab, one of my favorite facilities down there. It, too, is beautiful structure, brand-new and vacant, absent of humans in there that desperately need to get back in and make our local community college as great as it is. There's also some remodeling going on at the college. If you drive by the front entrance, there's building, constructing a new student center. And in that, they're going to redo the front entryway and make a larger courtyard. So it's not so confusing when you drive into the front of the college, you don't know where to go. And so there's additional parking out there as well. They will continue with Environmental Learning Center and some of the other programs that they have offered. Tim and I were walking around the campus and he says, well, you see this new industrial technology center? It's paved over the top of the tennis courts. And I says, where's the tennis courts? I used to play tennis here. And he says, well, we did too, but because of that, because we needed the space, we built this gorgeous technology center. I'm going to pause on my Commissioner Communication because I wholly apologize to Commissioner Fisher. I missed you and I was not on purpose. Take as much time as you need to continue with your comments, please, Commissioner Fisher.
Oh, Chair Smith, no worries at all. We figure we just.
Yeah, I know. Go ahead. What I have to say is not that important. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I think what you say is very important. My comments today, I wanted to focus on the importance of community engagement, and this has really been brought to light to me during this last week with the many different interactions that I've had with folks. Just some context, we've had a project, the Prosperity Collaboratives, which are grassroots, really intentional, human-based design efforts within Camby, Milwaukee, and Estacada, and this group celebrated somewhat of a coming together just yesterday about the takeaways from that effort. And it really highlighted the importance of connecting with community, getting input, being accessible, and having the people of our community really drive our policy. And that was darn right inspiring. The group will be compiling a report for us to consider. Our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Office, as well as other departments, is looking at operationalizing some of the many takeaways from that effort, and that is pretty exciting. Other conversations that we've had, and Commissioner Savas isn't here now, but we both participated at the Clackamas County Business Alliance, and in that conversation and connecting with our business community, it really highlights the importance of us taking this moment in where we are in this pandemic and looking at what resources we're going to be, we have from the state and federal level, and focusing on how can we recover stronger. Business community really needs support. Our children and families really need support. I saw, I had to wait for a school bus today. I just almost want to just say, hallelujah, thank you for the school bus, that kids are very limited going back to school. But we've got to support these kids, got to support these families, and figure out a way through this that will make us stronger and better to really keep what worked well before the crisis, but also to, from what we've learned, to very strategically maintain it and build upon it. So those are my comments for today. I'm looking forward to our boards engaging on the $81 million of direct allocation and how we should utilize that money to best benefit the people of Clackamas County. So thank you, Chair Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
Please, I want to hear the rest of what you have to say.
I know. Sometimes, you know, I get ahead of myself on these meetings. Well, in addition to the regular policy committees I sit on, because, Chair, I have some other meetings that I attend. This afternoon at 1:00 is the Quarterly Audit Committee, of which the audits of our county offices and departments will be attending that. Also at 2:00, I am attending the monthly Mayor's and Chair Committee Meeting, of which is Zoom, and the mayor's, we all talk. I listen to what they think the county should offer. I try to help them out whenever we can, just a good area for communication. And then later on this afternoon, I have a monthly Union Presidents' Meeting, of which I listen to the concerns, and I really enjoy that because it's an opportunity for the union presidents to talk about an issue before it becomes a problem, and we can head it off with our employees. And I find that really helpful to me, just what's happening in the workplace with folks. On Friday, I will be attending my monthly Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization meeting in keeping with my commitment to disaster management in my county. We also have regional structure that we work with in the emergencies. Last month, we identified transportation routes and hubs in each of the county's communication hubs, transportation routes, and I always look forward to those meetings. They're about an hour and a half on Friday, and it's an opportunity for me to collaborate with five additional counties, including Clark County in Washington, on that. I'm continuing with my Tri-Chairs Meeting, my weekly meeting with the chairs from Monmouth and Washington County, along with the governor's staff, primarily that revolves around COVID. The governor is mindful that we're approaching summer. She is working on metrics for outdoor organizations. In that, she said if a county was at low level, 50% of capacity would be allowed with no caps. Additionally, Leah Horner did state that they felt they were three to four months ahead of the metrics used in our timeline to open up our counties. All of us just want to get out there and get going on our business. With the Biden administration, the national saying vaccinations by May 1st, I'm very measured in that statement, in that all states must do away with the phasing in and priority system that the vaccinations will be offered for everybody. However, however, national, we need the vaccination. We just can't open it up and then turn people away because we don't have it, and the messaging and the language is so confusing. The vaccinations, I will say, are not mandatory, because I've been getting hits on that, although it is my duty to say when vaccinations are available. The other side that I'm getting hearing from, oh, quit promoting vaccinations. I am not promoting anything. I'm simply offering up information. Regarding the fair, our county fair is one of the most sought-after venues in summer activity. We are working forward to try and open our fair. I've talked to staff about it, what the metrics would look like, depending on if we're in low or if the metrics are totally waived. What would be a mask policy in the third week of August, the hottest day of the year, and people are going to be wearing masks outdoors? I talked to that about with our emergency management director. I don't even see how that is possible. I will not advocate for wearing masks if the fair is opened outside, but if you're inside a building, that's a different story. I just don't see how that is even healthy for people to be running around in 95-degree weather with a mask on outside. So that's an issue that we're going to have to work through. That's a very bold stand on my part, but it makes sense, and it's something that I hear from for a lot of people. We are putting that together. I hope our governor is paying attention and listening to this. I think she is. I think she wants to keep Oregonians healthy, but I also think that she needs to start looking on opening up our state again. With that in mind, we are adjourned, and thank you.